The council added some technology this evening, which is that microphone.
Natalie Father, thank you so much for tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to gather and connect business on behalf of the citizens of Helena. But we just need you, we need you to guide us, direct us. We ask that you pour out wisdom and revelation upon us so that we know how to act on your behalf for the citizens. But we ask you to protect our police and firemen, all of our employees. We ask that you give them wisdom where to know how to do their jobs effectively and to give them favor, Lord. And then we just pray for our residents represented here tonight and night with us as well. We ask our God for your protection over them and your wisdom to be poured out over them. Pray, Lord, God, that you continue to just reveal more and more of your plan for Helena through each and every one of us. But we love you and we pray to you. We thank you once again. We ask all this in your son's perfect name.
Amen.
First, what we need to roll call, sorry ma'am, council roll call.
Posing here, Van Cleve.
Here.
LaBelle.
Here.
Joseph.
Here.
Woodman.
We have a forum. The council have, y'all had a chance to look at the bills? You've been pretty busy. Looked them over, any questions about? Nothing? Very good. Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Have the bills first?
Minutes. Minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at this.
Give me that.
Well, we have to do, we have to do the bills and the minutes, right?
The minutes come first.
See, online, the bills go first. I'm sorry. All right, let's go. I apologize. The minutes from 11/09/2020, y'all have a chance to read those? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from November 9.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Question has been made and seconded. The minutes are approved. Now we get to the revenue. I am really missing out today.
You're fine. Relax, you're fine.
All in favor of paying the bills, say aye.
Pass it to them.
I'm walking out, I'll be back in. I've been so good until today. All right. All those in favor of paying the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Throw up some hearts. You love Ms. Alice.
The minutes are passed. Next. Now we're finally gonna pay those bills.
You just wanted to pay the bills. We appreciate that.
All right. Have y'all had a chance to look at the revenue report and the bail payment? I'll entertain a motion.
So make a motion, we pay the bills?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pay the bills. Good. Now, I want to talk to the chairman of the sovereign Brian for a minute. Give us our municipal operations report.
Thanks, Alice. Good afternoon or evening, everybody. Glad to see everybody here. But a couple of different things that I really want to pull out, point out to everybody's attention around what's going on with the city as far as the municipal side with it. So Sanzo, our dog for the police department, last week did the National K-9 Tracking Recertification Course and actually placed third in the country in its, out of 125 tracking dogs. So we've got a good dog. I know that it started, Jackson does a great job taking care of the dog and handling it. So a great job to that duo. One thing that we'll talk about in a little bit, or it's on the agenda, which is the new park opened up this past weekend on Saturday. Thirty-four acres of amazingness that US Steel has developed and will be handing over to us tonight as a city park. So another great addition to the city with the park playground, trails, history, all of it is there for your enjoyment. Then I know that, I want to thank the council. I know that one of the things y'all did last case meeting was, was approve the, the purchase of the excavator for the streets team. That was delivered late this afternoon, actually, like 4:35 o'clock. Jason was freaking here to get here because he was taking that excavator. So we have that now. So thank you all for that. And then the last thing is a lot of additional expenses has been thrust upon the city along with a lot of other places, but really with us, with COVID expenses. And that's one of the things that we are going to be doing now and we're working very hard with all the department heads. And Amanda is, is doing a great job with tracking the expenses, but really going after the federal funds to get reimbursed as a city for those COVID expenses. So a lot of good things will be coming in and ready to that. So that's all, good, Alice.
Hi. Thank you very much. Then actually, I think the next one's going to be a proclamation, which I always love having proclamations, the things I receive about small business.
Yes. So you thought I was done talking. So small business. It's one of those things that, that, you know, I will always be a huge supporter of small businesses. But I do want to bring a proclamation before the city for shopping small business or Small Business Saturday coming up this coming Saturday after Thanksgiving, which will be Saturday, November 28. So I'm not going to read this entire proclamation. We'll make sure that it gets put in the minutes. But the biggest thing is Saturday will be Shops, Small Business Saturday here in Helena. We need to make sure that we keep our tax dollars and our purchases here local to support those businesses. It's great to go to a big box store, but it's even better to support the mom and pop store that's right down the street in our community. So make sure that you shop small on Saturday. I feel like I'm doing a commercial right now.
You are.
Yes.
But that's okay. Commercial for Helena is always good. It's always back to good. All right. Next thing we have is the transfer of ownership of the Lee Springs Park property from US Steel to the city of Helena. Y'all have a copy of the warranty date that was given to us? If you have not been out to that park, please though. Yes, is Jayden here? Yeah, Jayden's here. Oh, there he is. Okay. I didn't know he was here, Jayden. Thank you.
Well, thanks for having me out today. I'm Jayden Cowan with US Steel and their director of real estate here in Alabama office. And we're just excited about the park. Sorry I was a few minutes late for the work session, but the soul of my future red, which tells you where I'm at, right? So was very pleased, went out to the park this, this afternoon to just kind of check it out and see what kind of activity and it was slap full. And the parking lot was full. People were out enjoying the park. They were walking around the concrete trail, the red rock trail. The big slide kids were, you know, falling down on their knees and dusting themselves off and running around. It was really outstanding. And thanks to city council mayor, who came out on Saturday for a ribbon cutting, what an outstanding event that was. The weather was just perfect. And what a, what a beautiful event it was to see people and families enjoying the park. US Steel completed this park just recently with the support of Alabama Abandoned Mine Lands Program assistance and also from the Office of Surface Mining and Reclamation Enforcement, which is a division of the Department of Interior. The total bill on that was approximately $1.25 million spent on that park. If you haven't been out there yet, citizens, please make your way out. We had the fire department, the police tour man out on Saturday and then previously on Friday. City clerk was out. It was, it's, it's just outstanding. And so I encourage everybody, bring your families out, enjoy what your tax dollars as a, as a federal taxpayer has gone to put into this park and really the city of Helena gets to enjoy it. I think, Mayor, it's going to be a regional draw. I think people in Hoover, maybe even Blount County or Coleman are going to come down. They may not come down every weekend to enjoy the park, but I think that people are going to come to check it out. I think work's going to travel fast about how nice this park is. I think people are going to come and want to check it out on a, on a Saturday afternoon. And it's just nestled in there. You don't feel like you're in a big playground area. It's just, just super nice the way that it was designed. And I have to give Amy Smith with Studio A a lot of credit for her design on that Superior State Contractor who built it. A lot of credit to Jeff Boyd, our project manager, who managed the project. And, and it's one of these projects where a lot of the material that was bought in from out of state, really a high quality level of material. So we designed the park so that there's currently no power, there's currently no irrigation. It's all things that are going to be very low maintenance. And, and the structure that is there should last a long time. So we're looking forward to having this park in Hillsborough, in the city of Helena, for decades to come.
It fits into the environment beautifully. I was blown by the niceness.
Any questions for me?
Can you build more of them somewhere else?
We apply for, for the grant every single, every single year. And every single year, the grants that we apply for do include projects that will be constructed in the city of Helena. We don't always win projects in the city of Helena, but we do apply them every year.
That's nice to know. Yes, it's really nice to know. It is excellent. That would be my only request is you just keep bringing that stuff to Helena. But it is great. Thank you so much.
This is almost the, just to stay important, we really want to do this, but we will entertain a motion to approve the acceptance of the transfer of ownership of Lee Springs Park property from US Steel to the city of Helena.
I make a motion that we approve the transfer of ownership of Lee Springs Park to the city of Helena.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, then next, I am going to visit our confirmation of our city council liaison appointments. And while, but the council has worked really hard trying to get the right people on the different boards and, and we appreciate all the people that have applied. All right, Brian. Did you break that? You've already done that, Brian. Are you going to tell them what we got and then they're going to read their account?
You can just read the liaisons. On the top part of your page.
That didn't know if you wanted to do it or not?
No, I let you do it.
You let me do it? Okay. I promised y'all I really was ready for this. Anyway, count, each council person has like a liaison to one or two or three, make different committees and boards and, and so we've all got jobs where we try to work with people and help, help keep them connected. But our administration liaison is me, Alice LaBelle. Beautification board is Chris Van Cleve. But pre-trail is Hal Woodman, who might be with us tonight. Economic Development Board is Chris Van Cleve. Farmers Market is Hal Woodman. Fire is me, Alice LaBelle. Historic Preservation Society is Hal Woodman. The hot board, which is Helena Old Town Board, is Laura Joseph. Inspections is Hal Woodman. The library board is Laura Joseph. Parks and Recreation is Lee Halsey. Planning and zoning is Hal Woodman. Police is Lee Halsey. Streets, Chris Van Cleve. Teen Council, it's me, Alice LaBelle. And the utility board is Chris Van Cleve. Now, each one of them, we're going to, if we were going to read out the board members for their particular board. And we're going to start with beautification board. Chris, up to you.
So are we going to confirm?
I thought we were going to read out first.
For beautification board, the members will be Joy Childers, Stephanie Dorch, Kim Edwards, Rebecca Henderson, Christine Hodge, John Hodge, Becky Holly, Carolyn Houston, Luther Jarman, Randy Lambert, Christine Alivio, Ashley Puckett, Jennifer Springfield, and Kristy Wilson.
Next will be the board of adjustments. Brian?
So Board of Adjustments, Chris Copeland, Sean Desso, Scott Assler, Jeff Latham, Jim Wathen. So Economic Developments, we've got Tim Ansley, Alan Farmer, Cameron Griffin, Kelly Holmes, Todd McCorr, Yvonne Murphy, Kelly Morgan, Tanner Newhouse, William Norwood, Stephen Savinkie, Scott Shenara, and Chris Smith.
The Farmers Market is Hal Woodman's, but I'm going to read his since he's not here. And that would be Mark Brady, Kimberly Ford, Scott Newman, and Amanda Smith. Also, Historic Preservation is Hal's, but I'll read his members are Linda Do, Shannon Holland, Brittany Muncher, Gary Penhale, and Linda Werstman. And then we have the hot board. It's Brian.
The members of the Helena Old Town Board will be John Barnes, David Flynn, Kim Bork, Brian Haynes, Jason Frueg, David Schluter, Jeremy Allen, Billy Rosner, Joanna McClellan, Jake Resmussen, and Jana May.
Now, I'll go back to you, Glenn. Oh, Laura's library too. I'm sorry, Laura.
So next up is Library, and the members of the Library Board will be Tim Hart, Ryan Peters, Karen Scott, Brenda Walker, and Michelle Wilson.
Now, Ben is on. Brian?
Planning and zoning being Jack Gray, Bob Calianto, Robert Redisi, Ryan Crumpton, Darrell Howard, Tim Honeycutt, Ayesha Stanton, and David Landrum.
Highway Utilities?
Utilities. So Rhonda Lewis, Charlie Roberts, Dennis Wilson.
Now, I will entertain a motion from the council that we approve, to confirm the liaison and committee appointments. They're all listed.
I'll make a motion to confirm the appointments, to, how would I say this, to confirm the council and mayor board and committee appointments.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, a motion has been made and seconded. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. All right, now, the next thing we have is the paving bid project for Creekwater subdivision. The streets, do you want to talk about that a little bit, Brian?
Yeah, so we opened up the bid process. It closed about a week or so ago. When the bills were, bids were unsealed, we did accept the lowest bidder of all bidders. So we will be repaving the streets in Creekwater. And it would be a cost to the city of $109,147.25 is what the low bid was.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for us to approve the bid, $109,147.25 to pay the streets in Creekwater subdivision.
We'll make a motion that we accept this bid for $109,147.25 to complete the project at Creekwater.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next on our list is a approval deny of a Huskies Package Shore. Remember it was court, there you want to talk to us about that? Okay, representatives from the Huskies Package Shore, would you like to say something first?
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
Say your name. Very good.
My name is Amper Giovanni. And I've been managing this Huskies Woodmark gas station for last four years. And we just got finished with, got processed with ABC and waiting for a real purchase.
So you're asking for a license. There is one thing on your application that we questioned, and that about selling.
Number seven, seven years applications on your application. Could you help clarify for us?
We can clarify that because, like, you're not, it says, will you sell? Will you sell them on premises? You said, mark off premises.
Oh, no, it could be on premises.
That's, that's just an error. That's what we thought.
We would want you to, to update the, the application to state that.
We can go, we can go ahead and, and prove it, but you've got to make that change. All right, anybody have any other discussion or any questions?
Do you have anything else that you'd like to, to tell us about the Huskies Package Shore?
The most important thing for me is making sure that we are following all the rules and we are making sure that we are checking ID each time we sell. It's time to do a transaction.
That's very important. Thank you.
I will say they did make sure they're borrowing tools and everything they required to do it all. They asked for they even started the process.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Yes, very much. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the retail liquor license for the Huskies Package Shore with the understanding that we will correct the application. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the Huskies Package Shore for not a real one, it was about court, once amended.
Well, a second. Go ahead, Laura. We'll give that to Laura.
Okay, I think we've got to do this. So we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We'll state your, we'll let you change.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Next on our agenda is the proposed use of the property for One Environment Parkway. And we know we've got several people in the office that would like to speak to us. We'll try, we're going to try to let everybody speak. In Environment Parkway, we're going to, sorry, give an overview. We're going to limit you to five minutes, but you don't have to take the whole five minutes if you don't want to. And then after that, we'll let any of the citizens, any of the residents, anybody that would like to speak, and you will be limited to two minutes. So with that, if you want, maybe you'll state your name.
Hey there. My name is Mark Perlman. I'm at Leighton Perlman Real Estate. We're offices in Birmingham. My client is hoping to purchase the property to bring a wellness retreat center to One Environment Parkway. I don't know how extensive I need to, do you need some more information or?
Well, just whatever you've been saying for us in the audience today.
Okay, so in short, in my layman's terms, because I'm a Realtor, not a healthcare professional. There, when you have a loved one with a critical illness, either just diagnosed or live or going through the motions of dealing with a critical illness, these folks have found that oftentimes there are holes in our medical care system. And the, the natural instinct for love, compassion, and caring sort of falls by the wayside sometimes. So, and often people are, are, don't have services available to them based on socioeconomic situations, based on the location where they live in the country. So these folks have come up with a concept of a healing center, a retreat and healing center, where anyone, whether they have the financial ability or not, can come and have their services met all in one place. So for example, they might have medical professionals with talking about their illness, whatever that illness might be. They might have different kinds of care, whether that be yoga or music therapy or pet therapy, psychological assistance, things like that. And it's not just for the patient, it's for the family as well. And I think that might have gotten lost in translation. But this facility is a new concept, certainly not, certainly nothing in the southeast is, is here currently. And this is something that a grateful donor who's donated the funds to purchase the property has, really believes in and wants to see that happen. And when we found, when we stumbled upon the International Expeditions facility located at One Environment Parkway, we just immediately fell in love. The intent is to keep everything exactly as it is on the outside. There are some modifications that we've made on the inside, principally things like handicap accessibility, adding an elevator, things like that. So anyway, that's just a general overview. We have people here tonight from the architect who's helped, helped us design and retrofit the building to the president of the board of the entity that's purchasing the property. We have, there are, I believe, adjacent property, neighborhood people here to talk, so I can answer questions or I can just sit down and feel from there. So if you let me know.
I don't have any further questions.
You don't have any further questions. Okay. I mean, yeah, we're under your five minutes.
We welcome people up to talk. You do need to state.
I've read it. Yes, I've read it. All right. But before we let the residents come, I would like to let our chief tell us their opinion about this, if you don't mind.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that who's ever developing it realizes it may not be change in zoning, but it is an opposite change. And especially if there's going to be overnight people there. You're looking at sprinkler system, fire alarm, upgrades that are very expensive upgrades. I just want to make sure y'all are well aware.
Thank you so much. We are all too aware of that. Which is why one of the, one of the steps in the process obviously is initially just making sure that the zoning is appropriate for the work that we want to do. And then second, finding other wonderful donors like yourself who might want to be involved. Sprinkler systems, ventilator. And just for the record, there, there will definitely, overnight is one thing, because we know we have to accommodate that. But I doubt very seriously there will ever be any more than the people who used to work in the International Expedition Building at One Town. Fifty people that is. But yes, I hear you loud and clear about overnight.
But the park, that doesn't matter. It's a change of occupancy.
Right, right. Got you. Thank you.
Brad, you have anything from the points that you'd like to add?
No, it's a, that's a very safe area. We, I can't, I can't remember the last time we had a call out there. It's a, it's a very nice area, very low cost per service. I don't believe it's going to impact traffic in any way that would concern the police departments.
Now, residents, if y'all would like to, I'll take you one at a time and.
How did you take the last call out there?
I thought you were going to change your mind. I'm like, oh, really?
The last time someone was called out there was the fire department because my chimney had fallen apart. It's here at my house. I'm Kathy Ravis.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. State your name and your race.
Kathy Ravis. I live at Seven Environes. And a couple of concerns that came up that we kind of discussed, and I by no means speak for all the residents there, but just my husband and I. One was traffic. There used to be a few people who worked at International Expeditions. That has dwindled, but traffic has never been a problem for us out there, just because of the way it's laid out. Two, the building is up for sale, which disappointed us because. Um, two, the building is up for sale, which disappointed us because we liked the neighbors. But if it's going to be sold, we would much prefer it to be sold for a few purpose like this than, um-
For a purpose like this?
Yes, yes, exactly. Um, what we don't want is the building to sit empty or some other type of commercial business come in there that's worse. So, I really think this is something that the city was laying, could be very proud of. And for me, mine is all for-
So, you're all for it. Thank you very much.
That's it.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Alright, anyone else? Who's talked? No more residents from down here? She has the hotline. Anybody else?
I got a couple of jokes I can tell.
Well, actually, I don't. If we don't have anyone else that wants to speak, I'll give you a chance to see if there is anything else that you would like to say. Any of you from Environment?
Anything that I missed?
The only thing I would like to say, looking, I'm Adeline Harris, I'm sorry. I'm a, I'm college and now retired president of the LSC. The only thing I would like to say, sir, is that one of the reasons this property, based on other ones that we saw, was its location to the environment. Because we are not, being from a medical side, we know we need that extra support. So, thank you, um, and we promise to be good neighbors. So, we can't say anymore.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, alright, so, we're going to hear all the discussion from other people and everything. And so, I will entertain a motion to, actually, I'd like to clarify this, it's really a business license.
That's right, so, so, this, this has nothing to do with, you know, reselling.
You're asking me to be compatible with an area that you would issue them as a sign?
Correct. So, 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 so y'all's decision is, do, do y'all issue them yes or no of this license to operate at that address?
Right, I just wanna make sure.
Well, I, I'd just like to make a motion that we issue a business license, um, uh, for a property on Environment Parkway. Based on the information received and described here tonight, um, I'd like to make that motion move forward.
You have a second?
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry, did we record all votes or did we have someone abstain? Did you abstain?
No. I'll just, I, I have a mask on.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Alright. Lastly, is our wonderful council comments. Chris? Well, actually, I want to start with Laura down at the bottom.
Thanks, I never get to go first. This is such a treat. Um, I have already told him this privately, but I would like to let you know, gee, uh, just how big, um, that I am of Sergeant Jackson at Sanzo for their fantastic, um, performance of interpretation last week. Um, we, we have a great resource in that team and, um, just pleased as punch that they were able to, to show everybody how great they are. Brian, I wanted to agree with you on Small Business Saturday. I play on shopping local. Uh, actually, I, I started that already. Um, started doing some shopping with, uh, with local businesses here and, uh, encourage all of you to, to do that as well. Um, I, I'm looking forward to going to the Lee Springs Park, the new, um, my daughter had to cheer competition on Saturday morning, so I had to be with her and, um, was unable to miss the, was unable to attend the ribbon cutting. So, I can't wait to go out there with, with my kids and explore. Um, and just because I could not make it through a meeting and not talk about our wonderful JP Holmes Public Library and our fantastic library in Dan Durin. Um, tonight, the library is featuring an evening storytime with a Thanksgiving theme. Y'all, storytimes usually take place during the day, so for us to have one at night is gonna be, it's a fantastic resource for, um, for working parents. And I, I really applaud you guys for taking the initiative to serve, um, that area of our community. Um, uh, and they would also like for me to thank a couple of people on behalf of the library. Uh, Old Town Dental brought by a very nice gift basket for employees, and that was very nice and thoughtful of them. And the Knit Witnesses Sewing Group from Helena United Methodist Church. And, um, many other organizations have all, have continued to support the library. So, if you haven't been lately, you should come by and, um, check out the new materials and continue to support your local library. And I hope all of you have a very happy Thanksgiving.
Alright, now, Chris, let's-
Sorry.
Well, Laura stole all our fun, I'm kidding. If, if, if you haven't been out to Lee Springs Park, I, I just want to encourage you to go without it Saturday for the ribbon cutting. And it's a beautiful park and I look forward to many years of enjoyment, uh, there. Uh, kudos again to Sergeant Jackson and, and Sanzo. I, I got to talk to them a little bit, uh, although I did get to pet Sanzo. Yeah. I got to talk to them a little bit on Saturday and express my, my congratulations to them. Uh, last thing I wanna talk about is, uh, Small Business Saturday. You know, small business is the backbone of the American economy. We have huge corporate interests, uh, in, in the southeast, but our small business owners, uh, make the, make the wheels go round and round as far as the American economy goes. And I just wanna encourage everybody to get out and shop small this year. Uh, let our local merchants know that they're appreciated.
Perfect. You do always feel like, uh, like, uh, just, uh, sound, uh, what is that thing? Uh, sounding, uh, I don't know, just repetitive. I can't think of the saying, but anyway, I just am gonna repeat some of their stuff, super sorry. But congratulations to Officer Jackson and his K-9 officer, his little buddy, and their accomplishments. And they're so cute. Um, but it is a, um, they do a fantastic job. And we have always had really great K-9 officers, and he's a great addition to the team. And Officer Jackson does a great job with him. So, very proud of him, not surprised at all. Um, they, they did a fantastic job. Then to just kinda echo this small business stuff, um, I, I have to agree completely with you. I mean, they are, they're, they're what keep things going. And, um, so I just, I encourage you to maybe avoid the Amazon for a few days. Perhaps go shop at these stores and call them and shop online. A lot of times they'll ship them to your house too, and you don't have to get out. Um, and you still have the opportunity to keep your dollars local and, and benefit those that have invested in our communities. And, and, you know, we can in turn support them. Um, and then I will say, I didn't get to come, uh, this weekend to the ribbon cutting. We had an event that had been planned for months and, um, and just, I couldn't get out of the conflict. But I've been out there a few times. It is absolutely stunning. If you haven't been, I mean, what am I, like, the fifth person to tell you, go see it? It is incredible. It has fantastic trails. There's a great, like, like, younger kid area, and it just progresses up. And it is, it's just different. I have never seen a park like it, um, but it's beautiful. If you haven't had a chance, go see it, take your family, go walk it. There's all kinds of things to do out there. It's fantastic. Um, so I really am appreciative of Jamie and the work that they've done and hey, but now that he does what he does every year for us, it's really nice. I, I didn't know that, so I'm, I'm glad to see that. Um, and then I'd just say congratulations to the board appointees, some of you are here tonight. And we look forward to you to making great things for you guys. Know that you'll do a good job and, um, so congratulations. And then as far as the wellness, that I, I had to write it down, it's kind of a mouthful. Southeast oil region wellness and health. I absolutely love the concept and heart of the project. Um, but I'm really grateful for residents coming out tonight to let us know that they were in support of it. Cause that absolutely helps make decisions like this, um, when there is, you know, some leeway. Um, and so, knowing that it's, it's something that they support makes our job so much easier. So, I'm really grateful for that. Um, and then the last thing is, um, happy Thanksgiving. Please be safe. I hope all of you stay well, and that your families do as well.
Okay, now, let's see, my notes, just so I mess that up. Everything they said, I agree with the whole part of the league. Um, and, but before we meet on December fourteenth again, we're gonna have some big activities here in Helena. Christmas tree lighting. Chris, you didn't mention that, did you?
No. We're having a Christmas tree lighting.
That, that will be on Friday, December the fourth. Mayor and his wife are gonna light the tree. Ms. Alabama is gonna be with us. She's gonna be performing. And then the Christmas parade is the next day, and it's the forty-ninth and a half. Because we're not gonna have the fiftieth, cause we wanna have a big celebration, and with COVID, we decided this is just the forty-ninth and a half. So, we'll have our big fiftieth next year. Because, you know, we've missed half a year anyway, right? So, this is the forty-nine and a half. So, help mark under your calendar, because that's what small town is all about. This is exactly what, I can't wait. I'm so excited for that, and we look forward to seeing all of you there. Thank you for being here and putting up with all my faux pas. Anybody else?